Got a skeleton. Maybe everybody came last. Anthony, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure.
Of the United States of America. Thanks, everyone. I want to start with a brief announcement. Anne Metchum Marada taught here for about twenty years, starting in the mid seventies, I would say. She was a foreign language teacher of French. He's the consummate, Mike might remember her. He left after about twenty years, decided she wanted to be in administration, went to Letchworth, lost money, worked her way up, ended up to be an assistant at Penn Town outside of Huff World and retired for quite some time. She had some serious health problems. Her lungs are shot. She never smoked in her life. It's an unusual disease. They live in Orchard Park. They've been driving back and forth to Cleveland Clinic for about a year, getting ready for a double lung transplant. And she got a call this afternoon, come to Cleveland, and they've got what they think is a match. Operation tomorrow. Clap your fingers, say some prayers. Anne is a really great person, so I just wanted to pass that along for those that are left that remember Kevin, Greg, so anyway, can't be right, right? Thank you for that. Okay, so we'll go right to.
Anyone to approve the agenda for the regular board meeting, January seventh, twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-three, second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone votes? Thank you. That's.
Okay, in a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes, January three, twenty twenty-three.
Everybody okay with the minutes? Last meeting. I look like we are all in favor. Say aye. Aye, anyone votes? Ma'am, thank you. Which brings us to the. Yeah, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Hi, it's a long one for the committee. I S has finished their competition last year. As in the past, this year's teams were selected by the high school English teachers and Miss Howard. Drum students met with Miss Howard several times to prepare their monologues. This is currently prepared packets for all team members and met with the entire team to view materials and go over expectations, strategies, et cetera. Winning writing pieces from previous years were also shared and discussed with students competing in that area. For the creative writing category, a portion of the writing component of the competition was completed by students in school before the date of the competition. This was done without any problems by our students and the conference room using their Chromebooks. And then now's the winners. Desmond Rosowski in first place and Jesse Kelly in second place for the creative writing portion. For the dramatic presentation or monologues, Ayla Ray in first place, Will Sheiner in second place, and Poppy Thomas in third place. In literary interpretation, Daphne Domhazel in first place, Anna Levy in second place. Our first place team was Daphne Domhazel, Ayla Ray, and Jasmine Rosowski. Second place team, Anna Levy, Poppy Thomas, and Jesse Kelly. Fourth place team, Ava Scoville, Will Sheiner, and Sophie Prinsky. Mrs. Mueller has students from Bosse's in Rochester that are shattering her for a few days for the semester as well as the next. N J Jess spent afternoon before the holiday break and made greeting cards for Margaret State residents. We dropped off more than a hundred holiday cards off to the residents. N J Jess also finished the holiday food drive with the food pantry. We received a note from the food pantry thanking us for our work with the food items and how our contributions assisted in the success of the holiday food baskets this year. Mrs. Harvey will be taking our students on a glow with your hands field trip once again in March. On March twenty-fourth, students interested in healthcare can attend this event at the J C C Batavia campus. Students can register with their school counselor by January twenty-seven. The middle school, high school ski club went on its first two of six outings in the past two Thursdays. The club has sixty-six members, forty-seven of them went on the fifth of this month, and twenty-five of them went on the twelfth of this month.
Yeah.
The smaller turnout of the two this past week was due to a rain forecast, spring-like weather, and a middle school, high school jazz band show choir and acapella concert, which was a success. The fine art festival is underway, and the Geneseo Art Department is showing lots of highlights from the first half of the year. Students enjoy having their efforts on display, and the art teachers have already received many kudos on what the students have done. If you have a chance, stop by, stop down to see what the art department's up to. Our drum club is really excited for a show which will be performed March seventeenth and eighteenth. And we are hoping to send patron letters out by the end of January. Our show is a play that goes wrong. It's a play in a play. And games are meets tonight. Swim, the swim team is in Livonia, and that started at five P M. Wrestling is in Danceville, and that started at six P M. Hockey is in Batavia. That started also at six P M. JV basketball, both boys and girls, are in York, and one game was at five thirty and one game is at seven. Any questions?
Well done.
I also have one from middle school. The middle school athletics team took third place at the second competition in Livonia. The team won the first meet by a very large margin, which is very good, and the second team is still first overall, I believe only by five points. The pivotal third meet will be Tuesday, February fourteenth. Now, questions? Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Here. All right. Mr. Salatell.
Good luck to everybody. Hope your new year is off to a great start. There's a few topics I just want to give you an update on. The first one, maybe around the corner. Midterm week coming on. And next week. So I did want to give you some information. Why do you do midterm? Because when, at one time, midterms were given more so for the grade, not really. And then a pretty significant amount for the second quarter grade. And that is probably the least reason for us giving it now. More so for me, it's about the opportunity to give a cumulative exam from the work that started in September that teachers can use as a measurement to say, okay, where are our gaps? Before we get to the Regents exams at the end of the year. So it's not about this waste twenty percent towards your second quarter grades. Now, teachers have flexibility how much they want to count it for. But the grade is not the purpose, and this is what I communicated to our staff as well during the faculty meeting. This is really an opportunity for us to measure progress. We know that the pandemic negatively impacted education in many ways. And we keep hearing what pandemic's over. Think after. And the issues that two years of interrupted education have caused are not going away, and that's common in all schools. Whether it's attendance, mental health, gaps in learning, misconcepts, skills that students haven't developed. So it's important for us to get the measurement of that. The other area that I think is pretty important. Our students, because of the pandemic, really never got the experience that a traditional student prior to the pandemic would have gotten when it comes to practicing, taking Regents exams. So our senior classes here, as we all know, they really have had less than a handful of exams that they had to take. And even the junior classes impacted to some extent. So giving them an opportunity to take a longer exam. When we talk about college readiness, it's very important, besides the fact they'll be doing it in June. But when they get to college, oftentimes their exams are a little bit more lengthy, and for students not to have that practice, I worry about their lack of being prepared for those that go to college because today, that's not going to go away. Some of you work at the university level, and I'm sure even maybe in your courses that you give one big, pretty lengthy exam. So if students have the opportunity to practice that. Again, it's not always about the grade for us. It's about the measurement and the experience of taking exams. So any questions as it relates to midterm exams? Because you may hear your school say, oh, we don't do that anymore. And they don't because, you know, it is a lot of work for teachers and a lot of work for students. But I do still see value in that. And we'll continue to practice as long as we see that, and if we start to see that, you know, this really doesn't give us the plus as every thought it would, then we can always revisit it in the future. No questions.
I like your plan. You should be a third of your grade.
Yeah. And for those of you that have been around a while, I remember when Regents exams are factored in the final. And all that, and we've done away with all that because I do believe it's legitimate that some students aren't great test takers. Doesn't mean they haven't learned. Doesn't mean that they're not successful in the classroom, but that big exam just is a struggle. So we've even eliminated that in June. One, the state doesn't want you to really count Regents exams in June into their final average because really you're double penalized in a student. Not only now do they not get the Regents credit because they didn't pass the exam, now you're, now they're potentially not going to pass a course if that grade was worth twenty-five, fifty percent, and now drops their average below. So we've really gone away from that. It's more about the learning, the progression, and the final grade. So good point. So thank you.
Thanks, Liam. Well, students, how will they report next week? The sixth fall versus ninth fall?
It's a good question. Six, eight, they're going to do midterms, but they're more within their class. And the reason why we did that, to have middle school students outside of school just to come in for an hour or two. Parents, it was a struggle for parents. You know, with supervision and all that, as well as their exams don't have to be as lengthy. They'll have some time to practice down the road. So they will take midterm exams, but they're done within the class they only scheduled. So midterm six through eight will take place in the classroom. They will also have their full schedule. High school, there's a schedule went out, so it's all detailed what students have to take what exam. Any students that are taking a Regents exam because they have to do a makeup, or maybe they were ill last year, they, they will be notified by the counselor who also met with them to remind them that they have to take. The only exception this year is for the first time ever, we're having all of our juniors take the E L A Regents. Again, it's a practice that other schools have utilized in the past. The Regents exam at E L A is a little bit different than all the other subject matters because it's really a three-year exams. It's a work done in nine, ten, and then eleven. We feel like our students, and we want to give them the opportunity to say, okay, you're two and a half years in. Can you, can you get this done? And we think they have the skills and ability to be successful on it. Worst case scenario, if they're not, they still get the opportunity in June. So it's a good trial run. And we're going to look into that. And if it's something that our students perform well at, or at least consistent compared to previous years, then we may continue this practice of offering it to all in January. Some schools do two exams. They do U S history. We're not there yet. That's, we're just coming off global and all that. We want to give them a little bit more time. A good question. Did I answer that?
Yeah, sounds great. Where, where is that, the schedule located?
It's on my webpage, and it was sent home in a letter to all families. Hopefully, everybody has it.
Either letter?
Yeah. Well, actually, we did electronic, and the, the issue with that was a lot of parents, they like to take the schedule, hard copy, put it right on their fridge. You know, there's still some of us that are old school. Yes.
No, I agree.
But yeah, it's extra work, but for the little postage where it gets to the right view. And it's, we put it in the Spanish version as well, so that's helpful for families. Let's speak for their language. All right. I want to thank you for approving the course guide last time. We've got my daughter's game, so I apologize for missing. I just want to go over what the process is for how we come up with our course guide, what the course guide is used for, and then move it forward. So we have a timeline, and it's all part of our scheduling timeline. So in mid-November, start, the conversation starts at team leaders in October. And I asked team leaders, okay, by November such and such, I need to know all of your recommendations for new courses or any changes to the course schedule. So they go back to their teams, they meet, and they decide, all right, are there some courses we want to add? Or courses we want to change? Is there wording in the course guide we want to change? Or maybe there's a portfolio, and we don't do that anymore. So it shouldn't be in the course guide, and we don't do that anymore. So I get all that information. And then we, we regroup again in our meeting in early November, the first week of November, and we discuss what the team leaders brought back from our October meeting after meeting with their group. Then we decide, okay, we have some discussion. What are some new courses this year that we should be looking at? Now, last year, we added a number of new courses. And there are years that there's sometimes you say, okay, we're going to add a few courses. This was not one of them, and there's reasons for that. There were a lot of unique situations. Last year, as you recall, two years ago, we switched to C T E model in the middle school, got away from only careers. So that was all the course work. We added some new courses based on a technology teacher that was very strong in a particular field, so we felt let's take advantage of their strengths. Well, that person went on to another school, hired a new technology person that has a whole different skill set. So it was, so we try to avoid that situation. But there are times where we still had a new course. This year, after reviewing the courses, we feel like we have a very strong, which we do. We have amount of AP courses that's comparable to a big suburban school. We have a wealth of what we call non-mandated electives. We have a ton of that. And then we also, this year, which was really unique, had an unbelievable percentage of students attending Bosse's, highest ever. The number of students. So when you decide to take a course out or put a course in, you want to see the need. Is that something they'll need? And we really wouldn't have that good information right now because so many students were, were taking Bosse, which by the way, was a good thing. That, that was phenomenal. So we're not going to discourage that. But we didn't feel need that there's a course that's jumping out at us that we needed to add or take away. We did change some curriculum in some of them. That's different than changing the course. So we will be doing some things differently. But as far as adding a whole new course, we decided not to. There's one that was considered, but really what happens to add a course in, especially in a special area? And if that teacher can only teach six assignments, you had a seventh assignment in there. Well, taking something away, we can't do that. And what are the priorities when that happens? First, our graduation requirements. We've got to make sure we cover all those classes. We also have units of study requirements at the middle level that we have to meet. So those are the top two things after that. Then we get into our electives and the non-mandated, what we call courses. So we take that information, then we make whatever changes in the course guide. We send it in for approval. Now the work, the meat and potatoes is really being done now because from now to March, the counselors have to meet with parents, students, decide what courses they want to take. Just because of courses in the course guide does not mean we can't offer every course in our course guide. Because quite frankly, you won't get to enrollment. But some years we'll offer a little bit more of this course because the interest is there, lesson is course, and they flip to the following year. There are some adjustments we've made to the course guide over the years. We would struggle with the AP Biology, AP Chemistry, because there's only a handful of students that you can choose from. So we decided to rotate that every other year so those students have an opportunity. But some courses, it just naturally through the course signup, when we look at it and say, okay, this year, there's really not enough student interest. We'll keep it in the course guide. But for one reason or another, that year, students weren't interested in that. And we've seen many times for a following year, it comes right back, and they're like, or I wanted that course and this course. So just because it's in the course. So, and that takes place through the scheduling process. So students meet with counselors, they sign up for courses. We then have what we call our first council meeting, our scheduling meeting, master schedule. And we look at all that data. Then I take the data, look at it, and say, okay, what courses do we really need to offer for certain pathways, maybe? Or just a really, we don't offer that in any other way. And we take a look at that and then see what courses. Well, this year isn't here, run that. There was very little interest. So then we go through that. Then we have to start to build the schedule. And then see how that works because you have to fit all these singletons in different areas. And what a singleton is, that's classes only offered once during the day. And that's our biggest problem right now when it comes to scheduling. Because our students really like to challenge themselves. Some take five APs. And that's trying to pick five APs into class and having them all singletons. And then, oh, by the way, they still need to, they need this and they need that. So it's really challenging. But we try to do the best we can to meet all the needs of the students, or at least their interests. And like I said, what was unique about this year was really the Bosse's offering and how many students, especially the senior class. And a lot of them are coming out with a trade, so it's just really good, good decision-making on their part, and it's, it's a perfect academic program fit for them. Then we have scheduling, master schedule, eighty-three, four, five, and we, we get it all ironed out and try to get all the pieces together. At Geneseo, we do something that not many schools do. I mean, usually a master schedule in a typical large school, if you get to eighty-two percent, what I mean by eighty-two percent, you get eighty-two percent, you fill the, the request, that's great. We really try to get to ninety, ninety-two, and ninety-three. We try to go above it. Yeah. There are times you can't. You can't put a hundred-piece puzzle together. You know, if you have a hundred and twenty, you just don't all fit in there. So that, that is, that's a real struggle. And then obviously, there's always times where students will change their minds. So you try to leave some room within the schedule. And where does that come into play? Accelerate. So we have some students that want to challenge themselves. And they say, you know what? I'm going to accelerate in eighth grade. I'm going to take algebra. And what happens is they get maybe ten weeks in, and they're like, I'm struggling. I have to put so much time into this. I'm struggling with it. It's taken away from learning in other areas and focus in other areas. I want to go back to eighth grade math. So you have to always leave a little flexibility. Some schools, how they do a master schedule, you look at your F T E, your full-time teachers. You, you add the number of sections, you match out every single one, twenty-five, twenty-five, thirty, thirty, and you call it a day. And if you don't, if you don't, if you can't get the course you wanted, like, too bad. We don't, we don't do it that way. And that's sometimes where you get the lopsided, you know, seven in this, eight, eight, four, sixteen in this. But we feel that's an important part for that, for a population of our student. We want to look at that. And same thing when, when we send students to Bosse's. That means we have to get other requirements done in first period. So that's going to overload that period. We have to get a class in because they have other graduation requirements. They have to still meet questions as it relates to the course guide, master schedule.
Few questions, I think.
Yeah.
Um, what's the latest number at Bosse's?
Close to fifty, so less. Yeah, yeah. One may have come back, so.
So a couple.
Then somewhere.
You mentioned something, you know, and come back to that, but sometime in the not-too-distant future, we have capital project that's going to be, and you got a steam wing. Are we preparing now for whatever we're going to do then?
Like when I said this year is unique and why we added some courses last year and not this year, it's because of that. Going into next year, we have to, that's going to have to be our focus. Is adding, and we know that that's going to come with a financial requirement. It's just because we had a course, you've got to consider textbooks, equipment, supplies, everything. So it comes with a financial component. So that's work that we will be doing. You know, because we're, we're guessing the steam room, December, maybe, right? We're open next year. I don't go out. Maybe so. Yeah. So we know next year, that has to be a priority. So why would I add technology courses this year?
Well. One of the things you said, and I want to give you a chance to kind of restate it, I hope. We had a teacher who was taking us down one path left. Now we got a teacher who's taking us down a different path. And if I can use a sports analogy, I like the West Coast offense, you know. You can take the player out, you put a new player in, but you still win. Yeah. Are we, what are we doing different now?
I don't think I said that correctly. So what I mean, I wasn't specific. So we still have that, those courses in.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't throw the course out, but now if we know we're building a steam lab, and we have a new technology teacher with those skills that are off the charts, maybe what we did two years ago isn't what we're going to do in two years. So we don't just automatically because a teacher doesn't come in, our teacher leads us. You don't do away with your program. I think there was value to those courses we offered. Didn't get the interest we were hoping for, too.
Okay.
So I, I wasn't specific enough. I apologize for that. But yeah, we, we can't just do what best fits one teacher because obviously, especially in today's day and age, more than ever, the turnover is outrageous. But yeah, we have to be very thoughtful in what our vision is going to be for next season. And we will visit some schools that have pretty solid steam programs, programs up and running.
And Jones?
Yes.
Fundamental to that?
He's all the knowledge behind. I'm Mr. Dwyer when it comes to technology. Did that answer your question, Mike?
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. I'm not done yet. Sorry. Had it all night. Graduation, I'm sure that that's something you may hear about in the community. People may ask you, what are we going to do about graduation? So we were informed in the fall that Live Worth is not available to us because there's some construction going on outside the building. We have brainstormed some ideas, looked at some things, some possibilities, and what I did last week was meet with the senior leaders, their officers, and then some others that joined the meeting, just to pick their brain a little bit of what their priorities are. And then what are our priorities? And it's, it's another really attribute of our students, how very aware they are of things and their ability to express. Because what I'm saying, sometimes you don't know what students, where they're coming from. So we threw out there, okay, if we had to have it here, here's our options. We can use the football field. And seating, not great because it's really, it doesn't seat that many. Location, terrible. We're going to have construction still going on. But I don't, I don't feed them all that. I, I first say, okay, what do you think of the football field? And immediately, those like, close, no, we don't want to do it down there. And one student said, my grandparents come. And how are they going to get down there? And then another one, I'm wearing heels. Can I wear heels on the turf? But they were very aware and providing great feedback. The other option was, we can use our auditorium. With that, the only drawback is we'd have to limit the number of spat papers. But that wasn't off the table. They like, you know, they said, okay, we can listen to that. Their number one priority is to try to get to the college. And the first idea, I was at a hockey game, and I spoke to someone down there, and prior to that, I spoke to someone. Can we kind of model what the college does and use the ice rink? And so this week, I spoke to a person at the college that handles all the big events, and she was very honest, and I really appreciate the feedback she gives because you don't want anything to do with that. For several reasons. One, you have to bring in all your chairs, your sound system and all that. And when we do the college graduations, early May, it's very hot. End of June, it's unbearable. And so that was something that now I can go back to our students, and so that wasn't really a good option. So then we started discussing what other big venues at the college that we should consider. And they have a theater down there, but again, there's seats about three hundred to four hundred, so we might as well be in our auditorium for that. And I asked about the ballroom because I remember years and years ago when I first came to Geneseo, that's where our athletic bank was. If some of you recall way, way back in the day, and it seemed like a pretty big venue. And through good discussions, that looks like it's going to be one of our better options. We would still have to limit to some extent tickets. But John and I have had discussion, we'll stream it again, so people that the grandparents that can't make it, they can watch it at home. So we're going to, you know, it'll be one of two areas for graduation. And next week, I'm going to meet with the student, or after break, after midterm, I should say, not after break. I will meet with all the seniors. So these are the options we're looking at. And answer any questions they may have. And then I'll hold a parent meeting, same thing, more presenting information because it really gets complicated. As many of you know, way back with the COVID graduation stuff, you have a thousand things coming at you, and you're like, well, we got to, you got to make, we have to make recommendations. We have to own graduation. We have to make the decisions with it. And we have to do it in the best interest of our students. So So I will answer, answer questions for uh parents that they may have, and it can, it's just unique, we have the biggest graduating class that we've had in my twenty years here. I, I, you know. Delire, you probably know, there were some classes way back in the day this big, but it's really very challenging. So a year that you lost your facility, now we got the largest class, it's perfect storm. And then we started really having uh bigger discussions. And by the way, faculty members, graduation, um advisor, all them were part of discussions too. So prior to having a discussion with the students. Then we started looking at our format. And this, this is where a bigger change is gonna happen. And uh, we'll explain to students, although I was very surprised with the positive feedback, I it was more like, shh, thank goodness. Ten years pass, then if you don't sit in on stage, our ceremonies get very long. And last year was three hours, there's been years, four hours, when you're talking ninety students, you're talking five, six hours. If we were to do it the way we're doing it. What surprised me was how many students really don't like standing in front of the audience, having everything read about them. There's a little equity issue with some students that are involved with more. But it also was really an uncomfortable feeling. And I guess I always bragged about our ceremony, because I do think it was wonderful, the spectacle is unique. But there's another side to that. And um, we also noticed last few years, there's more Hooton and Howland, and we really treat this as a formal event. And so we're gonna look at offering that same type recognition, but in a different format. And having faculty film themselves, reading the bios of their students, and then students and families be able to see it. And then also have a copy of it, so they'll have it for a lifetime. So we'll still recognize the students. Now, we're not gonna just call a student up and say, John who, gonna attend Princeton? That's it? We're gonna say son of so-and-so, so-and-so, future plans, major in so-and-so. And attend whatever university, or enter the workforce or military. So we will still recognize students, it just won't be where they stand there for that long. That's a big change. There is one more component to it, and and I'll be very transparent. It's become extremely difficult to get staff because now we gotta find staff and speak for ninety students.
Yeah.
And we've had such eternal. So before you had a big pool of staff members to choose from, and now it's a small pool, and asking them to come six hours and oh, I wait, now you're gonna speak on behalf of fifteen students, that's a struggle. So i- it's kind of a perfect storm, but the ceremony's still gonna be great, it'll be unique. Um.
Yeah.
Some parts be missed. But I think overall, we'll continue to offer quality graduation uh for our students. I do wanna answer questions, it's a, you know, and again, this is how it's gonna be with parents, I want them to ask questions. The more we get it out there, and some I'll have answers, so I'll get back to them. Any thoughts, any questions?
Um, you said that you would have, staff would still be the main speaker, but how, how do you envision that?
We're gonna record.
Record it, and then what, like a C V just goes out, or how?
I don't know if we're gonna do C V anymore, because I think people would prefer just flash drive.
Either U S B drives or put it on YouTube. It it would be similar in format to when we did that first outside graduation, where we had all the recordings pre-recorded. But then we had the faculty actually come out, you know what I mean? Um, and all you saw there was the audio, here would be the video of them, and we made that video accessible after the um, after the actual ceremony that year that we did. So that's kind of what we're picturing.
So that won't happen during the ceremony?
Correct.
It'll just be something that goes along with it.
It'll be before. And we can, we can, as, you know, we gotta look at a timeline. But we can be creative, but there's nothing saying we can't start playing that earlier in the week to build up the graduation for students to.
I think you brought up a good point, you said, um, we have, this class obviously has a lot of students that are attending the courses program. And we have a teacher coming from our school and read a um, a speech is unlikely. However, if we did it in this new format, having them read something very personal about someone that they've worked with two years in a half-day program. Um, I I think it's much more likely, so it it might add actually a a another element to our program that we didn't think of prior.
I agree on that. So the burden, so to speak, is with our class, that many students from moving forward to classes that are smaller. We were back to the format that we used last year.
I think if you may.
Were you going to offer each class that, and stuff through their graduation?
Yeah, I think uh, we evaluate, we assess how it goes this year. Um, but I don't wanna leave the option every year for, I I think we gotta say what's best for our school students, because one thing I do get at the end of graduation every year. And it's not one or two, it's a, it's a good amount of loved your ceremony, you gotta cut it back. Uh, I mean, I I get that a lot.
Okay.
And in past years, not that you'd say, oh, well, they're gone, now we keep going, but, you know, we've already made this our tradition, but things change. Technology wasn't what it was. We couldn't do this ten years ago, right?
Right.
So we gotta, we gotta adjust with the times. At airport, those schools, they get in an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes. And here we're five, six hours. And two other things, by the way, with the students that were very important to them, keeping it on the same day time, as well as keep it local. Because when I was exploring options, people said, wow, you know, you can go to Frontier Field, that's what this school. And I think our students want to go to college, school. And and I think that's important, that speaks volumes to who they are as well. And it's not always about the show, it's where's our fondest, fondest memory.
I don't have any comments, so then I would like to hear what parents have to say when you, when you talk to them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um, and again, for the parent conversations, it's I wanna hear from them, so I wanna hear what their questions are. Uh, it's impossible to go to me and say, okay, make everybody happy. That's not gonna happen. And um, we we found that even through difficult times, it's pandemic, right? There are some people wanting us to jump on the movie theater right away, right? Go out to parry. They didn't do that, we heard that. Others wanted to do completely online. But I think it's important to be able to answer questions. And and have people have a voice. At the end of the day, as you know my style, I take a leap from the student. And I would surprise at some of the students I would leave. So then I asked some graduates, I said, how'd you feel when you were saying hated it? In church, I don't know why we had to do that. Like, you know, that's a long day. And I said, yes, it is, but you know, it's celebration then. And then we're really not even talking to students that maybe don't have as much set for them, which our staff does an outstanding job of creating stuff, yeah. So just try to level the playing field. I think that's important. And and our community has changed, as we all know, right? So if if we can level the playing field with a lot of things, I think we should put our best foot forward in traffic. Any other questions as it relates to graduation?
What about the class?
Ben's got an open chat for you, sir. I let, I let District Doggo out there then. That's where I can just get out of the way. But uh, I, it won't be much since it's already a place, I imagine they have set up. Oh, by the way, it is air conditioned. That's good.
Yeah, we haven't talked about the present, I'm assuming it's similar to what it cost to use the.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, there you go. All right. Almost done here.
Okay.
Senior trip. We already over fifty students. So that's impressive, again, one of the biggest, biggest class, but one of the largest numbers of students we've ever, group of students we've ever taken. And uh, through building planning team, and this is where change comes in, we talk about graduation and change. Um, we've made some good changes there. What typically a senior trip in past years could range anywhere from six to eight hundred dollars for a family. And, you know, that's not really favorable for economically disadvantaged families. So through some good discussions, through building a planning team with students, uh, we're leveling the playing field there. We're hoping that it could be half that or less for every student, and it looks like right now it's gonna be. And why I say right now is only because we have a good problem that's causing another problem. We have a lot of students going. So typically, we bring one plus, and now it could be two.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good problem. And we're going up to the dude ranch again. Um, I'm hoping that this becomes disabled, because for me this is a place that offers something for every student of every interest. Those that wanna be in the sun can be on the beach, those that wanna horseback, bike, fish, canoe. Ballroom dance, it's all there. And every student that has ever gone on a trip there, we we've done it three times over twenty years, and never once did I get a bad review. When you go to Ocean City, if you're not a beach person.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do?
What are you gonna do?
And to see the students here, the senior classes, hang out at night and be together, isn't that what it's all about? It's not like that when you go to the beach resorts or other places, because you're always waiting in line for dinner. You're in the bus, half of your trip. And you're in a hotel. Here, it's like, dinner bells this time, you come eat. And they have all the choices, what they wanna eat, what they can eat. Then at night, they always have different games and activities, and if you don't wanna do that, you do a different game activity. So it's just been a great experience for our students. So we're hoping, and again, I applaud um, our community for supporting our students that that said, this is the best thing to do. And that gives me the leverage to say, maybe this is what our senior trip should be. It's affordable to all. Those that can't afford it, we can reasonably accommodate at a cost like that, it's hard, eight hundred dollars. Very hard. It's a very big strain on families. Senior year is very expensive to begin with. I know a lot of you guys graduate, you know what the senior year brings. So now, uh, any type of relief we can get families, I think is particularly important. Any questions on senior trip?
Where's the location of that?
It's riding high in uh Lake George, Bolton Land, you'd really bring up that, you've been up there. And if you're ever up that area, I I really recommend this for yourself, to go see it. You're gonna drive down dirt road, you're gonna think you're lost. But you really end up, the promised land, everything's so nice and uh last year, the senior class, they split up on their own, every student was playing kickball against each other, then they go play basketball, they just whatever you wanna do, you can play shuffleboard, you can do kindness, so it's just a great opportunity. And uh, foreign language trip. I I appreciate your thoughts on that. I wanna be able to answer any questions that anyone has related to the thing, the foreign language. Uh, the biggest message I can send right now is, this is tentative. There's, it's not easy to travel out of the country in today's day and age. So that is a message being sent to families. I know we're, it's two thousand twenty-four, you you're, you're ways away, but it'll be here before we know it. But it could be three months before this trip, and it could, this is not safe for our students, it's not not the right time to go. So that's my biggest message now, but I do wanna be able to answer any questions that you that. I know one of the questions that someone asked was, you know, how do we make this affordable to all? That's tough. It's a four thousand dollar trip. We can do our best, we start fundraising now. And some students have already, you know, socked away a lot. I've taught to parents in the past, I encourage their son or daughter to get a little part-time job and start saving now. We we allow payment plans, certainly some financial assistance if needed. But you're not gonna make it before a thousand dollar trip for, you know, a large number of students, obviously. Any questions as it relates to the trip?
I gave all my, in in an email, so when the time comes.
Sounds good. Happy to answer. And Cindy did share also. All right, and then two things from building painting, we're gonna start a kindness box in the middle school, high school. Basically, what that is, is for students to recognize students, or staff recognize students for just a deed or a good act they did. Could be something simple as walking down a mall, seeing a piece of paper, picking up, putting in the trash, could be helping a classmate out that's not feeling well, making sure they get to the health office. It's not who scored twenty-four points nine before. So they already get recognized. And I think sometimes the same students get recognized. And we have a lot of students that do the right thing each and every day. So a nice kindness box, where we recognize that, and what I would do is just give them, write a little postcard, get a little letter, you're recognized this week. We're doing X, Y, or Z. Thank you for making our school better, Chris. And then we've, we're working with Rotary, we're gonna have a student of the month. And this will be something online, and uh, basically, an expert student that goes above and beyond. They've recognized both middle school and high school, pizza policy's gonna give them a pizza. Rotary is gonna recognize them at their meetings, so there's some good student recognition programs being. A lot of this is coming from building paintings, so I think Curly is a faculty advisor that I'm part of it, have some parents, community members. And students, again, students have been great on that, tell you what you think. They've been really powerful. And I've done it and long-winded. I think Mr. Bailey's not here right now, I'm gonna be mad at him for being long-winded.
That's a very excellent thorough report, thank you very much.
If there's any questions on this, hesitate to reach out to Cindy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, what's the course, sir? How much trouble are we in?
I can assure you, my. Well, it depends on your. Uh, it's just that time of year where we start our rollover budget. Um, again, though your rollover budget, it's about to be that worst-case scenario, we keep our revenues exactly flat, you know. For all intents and purposes, as you said, if our revenues don't move one dollar, but we know we have some increased costs, what does that look like for us? Um, because we know that some of our expenses are gonna continue to go up. And we have contractual obligations we have to make, you know, most of its costs are gonna go up. Uh, we know healthcare is going up, things of that nature, so on the revenue side, again, we make our, we assume our pilots are gonna stay the same, they will go up a tiny little bit. We'll assume there's no increase in the tax levy, and we're not gonna increase our use of uh appropriated fund malice or reserves. And so again, it just comes down here, and this doesn't, this light doesn't like that white uh screen. But it's just almost revenues exactly flat, twenty-one million, nine hundred forty-eight thousand dollars, so. And we do that just to say, okay, if we then look at our expenses, and we know, again, we've got some salaries going up, our O Cs is, we've tentatively projected a five percent increase in costs there, we know. For example, we've got, as Mike was saying, up to sixty kids in our C T E program. And that, how O C S bills for that is on a three-year average. And year number one of that average is down around twenty, or so, like, by kids, the last two are at sixty, well. So now you've got a pretty big jump coming through us. So we know we're gonna have a pretty significant increase in O C S costs. We know E R S, the rate is going up, a couple percent or percent and a half, I should say. T R S is gonna be essentially flat, that's teacher retirement system. And our healthcare costs, right now, we're budgeting a fourteen percent increase. Uh, our consortium has told us that, you know, the range back in October, they were thinking ten to fourteen. Uh, the increase from ten fourteen percent, and it's looking like maybe on the ten-ish side of that, but we should know here in another month or so as well.
So Ken, what was the jump this year?
Twenty-one, almost twenty-two percent. So in in ten is still sizable, right? So, you know, it it's sad that a ten percent increase in your healthcare premium feels like a blessing. So we'll, we'll see how it, how it plays itself. Um, so if you look up here, you've got your. Um, so if you look up here, you've got your certified salaries, uh, going up here, about three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Our classified salaries, we're projecting to go up right now a hundred twenty thousand dollars. And these are rough. This is like January. And so we'll continue to dial these numbers in. But based on what we know right today, we have some negotiations going on. We'll see where, where they land. Um, then we hold our equipment, our contractual obligations, materials and supplies. We said, and if we hold all of that stuff, study what's gonna happen. Again, we talked about that increase in our BOCs costs. We take our, uh, our, our classified salaries and we multiply them by that thirteen point one percent to come up with that three hundred thousand dollar cost for ERS. We take all of our certified salaries, multiply that by the ten and a half percent to come up with our TRS cost. Uh, social security is just seven point six five percent of all of our salaries. We've had a few, uh, there are not any actual lost time injuries, but a few small claims on our, our workers' compensation. Workers' compensation. So we've thrown a smaller increase there. Uh, we'll see how that comes out. Or we should know that in about a month as well. Um, excuse me, our unemployment's, we're still spoiled right at about ten thousand dollars. The healthcare is reflective of a fourteen percent increase. We know what our debt service is gonna be for, uh, the next year. We are carrying that, uh, transferring capital of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Remember that's essentially, that's two different projects. That's the hundred thousand dollar capital outlay project. That, so what we do in twenty, in this case, twenty-three, twenty-four, will be receive our building in twenty-four, twenty-five. We have additional hundred fifty thousand dollars that's even back to us like a capital project. Just to try to keep, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars doesn't go far in a, in a building the size and in commercial, commercial construction. So it just tries to keep up with some of our more, uh, pressing building needs. Um, then you have a fifty thousand dollar transfer to school. And all that is. So our, our, our BOCs aid for our, we have our, let me take a step back here. Our school food service program is managed for us through G, GB BOCs. And because they do that, we get BOCs aid on that cost. That BOCs aid comes into our general fund, but it has to be sent over to the cafeteria fund and you do it through that expense. So you transfer that fifty thousand dollars over to cafeteria fund. And that transfer to school launch. So if you look at the bottom line here, we're about twenty-three point two million dollars. And expenses versus that twenty-one, nine forty-eight revenues, we're about one point three million dollars short. Um, I'm gonna tell you not to panic. I'm gonna tell you that. Um, we're, we're in pretty good shape and we think that, uh. Healthcare number is a little inflated, maybe a lot inflated. We'll see. Um, we think that we have some room to move, you know, on, on the revenue side of our budget. Um, I, I think, you know, um, the governor is, is made it. Publicly stated that she wants to fund a fully fund, fully fund foundation aid. Uh, for Gen Seal, that's a big number. Uh, we'll, we'll see if that comes to fruition when the state aid runs come out at some point. Um. I would have thought they'd been out by now, but she hasn't released her state budget yet. So as soon as she does that, we get, we'll get CD runs shortly there. Um, it's looking like somewhere around a million dollar increase in foundation aid. So that, that will help a bunch. Um, again, that two, one point three million dollar shortfall is not. A single dollar of an increase in the tax levy, which we, we would expect to see something there. So we're not, we're not too worried at this point. Um, the worry would come if, if they don't fund, don't fund your foundation aid the way they're promising to. That we'll have to kind of circle my, figure out where we go, but. With the, with the information we have right now, um, we're not too terribly worried. Um, what generally happens is you all know, the governor comes out with a budget. And education aid, you know, for the entire budget is X. And then through the horse trading, that is the New York State budget process. Money gets typically added to that, uh, education, that overall education package. It usually doesn't get taken away. And so that's what we would expect at this point. Um. You know, we do need to be somewhat mindful of, you know, in general, with the state, this little sense. Where all of this money comes from and, and, you know, right? So where does, how is New York State gonna ultimately fund this, right? Because they are relying, New York State government is heavily reliant on, on Wall Street tax revenues toppling. And if we fund all of this big New York State budget. And we're looking at a, you know, seven percent year-over-year inflation. And the, the, the stars might try to align to send this into a recession. And if that happens. The tax revenues, it will, will come down. And then twenty-four, twenty-five, where does the revenue? So, um, there's a lot of moving pieces. You know, if I could tell you where all that was gonna land, I, I. Forgive me, I don't think I'd be standing in front of you this evening. So, um. You know, I, I don't think anybody truly knows. They just think we need to be. Doing what we always do and that is preparing for the long, long-term production, financial production for the district. We'll continue to do that. Um, but again, I would say this is a starting point. I wouldn't be panicked. I wouldn't be. Uh, necessarily counting on all of that million dollar increase in aid. You know, for the long term, I think for twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, I think that's gonna come to fruition. Twenty-four, twenty-five, an unknown. Though I think we better just be cautious, just be cautious. I wouldn't entertain any question. Questions?
Super talent's report.
Well, thank you. And, um, much like David, I, I just wanted to publicly send our condolences on behalf of Gen Seal Central School District to Mr. Hayes, um, and his family. Who was a loss of his father, Dr. Robert Hayes, calling hours for Thursday night, Thursday afternoon and Thursday night in Avon. Um, he used the information I had for, um, to, I just wanted to publicly send our condolences to, to Mr. Hayes. They're a strong family unit and I'm, I'm sure this will be difficult. So we definitely wanna send our. And I can never really truly share a student's success because, um, it seems like every time we have a student, I didn't. But I did want to highlight, um, our results for the intersolastic competition in English activity, our ice competition. The tenth year in a row that GCS has once again played the ice cup. And just really impressed with. Miss Curly and just Howard for, or Miss Howard for all that they do with our students. So as, um, Gina said, this is our results, um, for. Kind of first part of that. So dramatic literary, so this must have been. Creative writing. So that was creative writing. Then it was dramatic presentation, literary interpretation. Um, again, the, the team results. And you can just see how strong of a, of a showing that the Gen Seal students did. So congratulations to all of our students in such a strong. Performance in the ice competition. And our work outside continues. You can see, uh, it's about a week, week and a half difference of the, of the steel supports that are going up. So on. On schedule and on budget. Those are two important things in a, in a capital project. Uh, Mr. Dwyer and I actually walked in together today and I was pointing out, um, the different parts of the parking lot that are now, the parking lot is now all LED. And there's some parts on the building that haven't been upgraded, but just the difference between the LED lights and the old lights. Uh, the picture on the right, which shows the, uh, lamps on the left as you're leaving the building. Those are the old lights and you can just see. How little light that they're, they're actually giving off. And unfortunately, the ones on the left side of the slide, which are showing the right side of, um. Of the, leaving the school, they're extremely bright. In fact, they're so bright, it's hard to get a picture to show how much brighter they're making it, um, at our entrance. So. It is, it's nice. We, I think we've talked for a while that the entrance to our school is, is dark. Um, we're gonna continue to assess it because I do think we might need to add more lights. But the external lights are also connected to the rooms. So. If, um, say for example, the chorus room is, is right there. If there's lights on that exterior wall. The wiring is connected to the interior wall. So when they work on that classroom inside, they will come out into the window of the lights on the outside. So they're all updated. So once everything is updated, we'll be, really be able to assess whether or not we need more lights, um, near our entrance to make it safe and. Right, but really our EPC is going very well. Elementary school hallways and classrooms have all been replaced. They're now working in the cafeteria and middle school and district office this week. So we've been right along. And you can see when you walk down the hallway, those are the, the new lights in the hallways. Um. Someone had asked last time about the damage in the hallway, what it looked like. This is the hallway down in the basement outside of the gym. Um, with all the tile removed when we did have the flood. Unfortunately, we did have to remove all the tile. Most would have probably seen it by now, fed out to a sporting event, but. Um, that's, that's what our tileless halls found like. Um, we did have. Someone come and really evaluate with the floors and he said. He feels that as long as it hasn't continued, damage hasn't continued to progress, that we've probably seen the worst of it and just keep that airflow going. And he wouldn't want to recommend trying to do anything to treat the floors because if it's. You know, kind of arching up or cupping because of the water. Then when it actually dried out, we have the opposite effect. So he said, we really need to wait and see when it's truly dried out, the end result of the floor. And it's not in the plain, um, part of the floor. So we're in good shape there. And our bleachers. So we did replace a high number of really broken, um, dangerous sections of the bleachers. What's difficult about the bleachers is you just can't, um, replace one broken part. They're all interconnected. So when you replace one piece, you have to, um. Replace the whole row, row, row. Um. In, you know, we've had conversations, more and more continuing to be broke and, um, you know, Mr. Salatine, I've been to plenty of games. It's, it's not like. Our, because at one point we were like, gosh, it's where our students are sitting. It's where our fans are sitting. What's happening? Um, I don't know because I'm there at the games and it's not like any of our fans are out of control, you know, jumping up and down any differently than. Than any other sporting event. So we don't know if we just have defective bleachers, but trying to, um. Continue to replace the broken ones where that gets difficult. It's back to my first point of how they're all interconnected. And then they come in boxes of. X, I don't, I don't know the exact number. So it's not like you could buy three rows and be done. You have to buy a certain amount. Um, and we did spend. Just under ten thousand, um, ten on what we've fixed so far. So. You know, trying to be cognizant of the fact that there's going to be a future gym project. And replace the worst ones, um, but also still having our gym up like a, a place that we're proud to be in. So it's. It's a fine balance, but know that that's, that's where we are with, with that status. And I don't know if you've been, um, in and have seen the replaced bleachers, but. An improvement, not perfect, an improvement. So the state of the state. So I think this is, you know, a little bit more information in regards to what we can expect or what we're. Told to expect with the governor's budget. Again, she is fully, um, funding the foundation aid and that's a two point seven billion dollar increase, which just, I mean, when you start thinking about the, the amount of money that they're. They're really targeting to put towards education. It's wonderful. It, it does make me a little concerned about those amounts for all the reasons that I can mention. Um, another big initiative is expanding a full-day public, um, for UPK. And that's to make sure that all four-year-olds have a, um, full-day or half-day program. Again, she is allocating a hundred and twenty-five million dollars towards that. Um, as Mr. Salatell was talking earlier about some of the, the results in the learning loss that we've seen, she is putting two hundred and fifty million dollars towards tutoring programs, really trying to help address that. And then, um, having monies allocated to help students start earning college credit earlier in high school. As well as a way to pay off their, their debt. And this next one, Mr. Dwyer, this one's for you. Are you ready? She said she's gonna overhaul the civil services. Now.
I saw that.
Yeah, we'll see. Right. So more modern exams and continuous recruitment because anyone who works in a school system knows that when we need to hire someone, like we have a position that we're trying to hire for now for technology. Um, there's not people taking the test. So that continuous recruitment is very important as well as having. Pass it would actually evaluate the skills needed for the jobs that we, we currently have. When we talked about that UP, um, expansion grant, we are gonna apply for extended UP, um, UPK grant. So we would like to have two classrooms instead of one. Really looking at the potential of offering special education services within the UPK program. So it'd be an eighteen-student program where you would have nine students who have IEPs and need related services. And the other students, um, would not have any other special programming to do in a class of eighteen students. So we're in the process of applying. The application is due February seventeenth and we'll, we'll keep you updated, but hopefully we'll. So we actually did not end up turning anyway. Um, and we're just looking at different barriers that, um. Why that is because certainly there were, there's more than eighteen students entering our kindergarten classroom. Sometimes location, you know, the fact that it is not, um, pride and joy and not the school, um, is a concern as well as. Sometimes not offering transportation, which is the one piece that, um, the advocacy's around, um, kindergarten, UPK is, is still. Saying, you know, you say it's important for our four-year-olds to be in a full-day program, but you won't aid transportation for pre-K students. So. Really advocating for that aspect of it.
We had more applies. So you were saying because they. They made decisions on their own and we didn't actually turn them on. Is it?
So what we did, we did have more than eighteen students. We went through the lottery. And, um, some of the families that were picked to be in the lottery to take a slot in the program declined. And so then other students, so everyone that applied that wanted a slot did get.
And they declined because of transportation or whatever?
We are in the process. Um, Stephanie's actually working on creating a survey to find out the reasons why they applied. So, yeah. I'm sorry.
UPK is a state.
Yes.
Is that a cost share or? Fully funded, what's the structure of that?
Yep. So our UPK is fully funded. So it is ninety-seven thousand, two hundred, um, dollars and. Um, that pays for our program as well as materials and supplies. That's all through pride and joy.
And we'll cost share all that.
No, no, we don't. We do not have to match it.
Thank you.
We did receive our SO accountability results. You know, this is something that both, um, Stephanie and I have talked about throughout the year. And really looking at our graduation rates, our results on our state assessments. They're just starting the accountability back up. And so it's, it's a little disjointed because they don't have all the data. That, um, they typically had in the past to make these, these determinations. But the good news is that we in all areas are considered to be in good standing. They don't call it good standing anymore. It's now considered LSI, local su- support and improvement. Meaning that we should continue to do what we're doing at our own level and we're, we're progressing at a, at a rate. So, um, I'll have Stephanie do a more thorough. Report on our specific, um, SO accountability results, but just to know that we are in good standing, which is good news. Later on, you will be, um, approving or I'm, I'm making the recommendation to approve a tax exemption. So we are authorized to adopt a resolution to provide tax exemptions for someone with a disability and limited income. And, uh, a property owner who qualifies as a senior citizen. The exemptions which are in your packet are based on a sliding scale. So once it's approved, um, someone with an income between a certain range would have a certain percentage. Taking out their taxes. So in the past, we have typically, um, stayed with Livingston County when they made a recommendation to. Adopt a resolution. We have always matched that. And that is the recommendation that is in the board packet tonight. And upcoming events, Mr. Dwyer did mention that we have the legislative breakfast at York Central School. That is this Saturday. Nine.
Nine o'clock.
Um, and then January thirtieth, we have our third super dense conference day of the year. So looking forward to. Working together, we're actually planning a K through twelve staff, um, activity. We're really starting to work on. Um, beginning those curriculum documents and what are our first steps with that, that piece. So. First time and I think, what'd we say, probably ten years that we've done a full, a full staff initiative. And, um, even longer since we've started looking at, at curriculum and instruction. So excited about those pieces. Any questions?
Regarding the civil service, I'm.
Regarding the civil service, I'm delighted. That she's added that to our state of the state address. And it wouldn't be nice if at some point we have civil service exams, so they're job-related. Um, but also what she might be thinking of is the state is short over twelve thousand workers. And she may be thinking about that too, as far as. Tweaking the civil service, but if it if it helps the rest of us, great, so we'll see. Any other questions for the superintendent? Community relations, I don't think we've had any. Thank you. So we'll write the committee report. This this one take on. Nothing on the policy we didn't eat this time, and at our last meeting, we approved that everything that was up. Was up to bat, so. A report on that, I don't think there's any report on GCE. Take us right to personnel.
Under personnel. Step to consent motion for item seven point oh two through seven point.
Okay, questions on any of those items? Good, everybody good, okay, uh, all in favor of those, say aye.
So the consent vote, writing is eight point oh two through.
Questions on those?
Just yeah, an extension, um. It's, Mrs. Flower said this would put us in line with the the towns, the villages, and the county. Effect of the next school year.
Everybody okay with that? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Nails, thank you.
Under the business office. Got the paint consent motion for. Nine point zero two. Nine point oh seven.
Second, okay. Questions on those?
I did send one, we don't need to cover that.
Everybody good? Okay, all in favor?
I can understand more than entering to executive session for contract.
Second, all in favor?